We're good, 7 o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village Board Work Session Meeting today, Monday, June 1st. Present is Deputy Mayor Paul Lang, Trustee Sampson, Trustee Ladato, and Trustee Kolor. Sitting next to me is our Building Inspector John Terry. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I like to have a moment of silence. I put on the agenda for the United States of America for everything that we have been going through the past couple of days. Okay. I'm sorry, Val. Just have a few announcements. High School Graduation Parade is scheduled for Saturday, June 27th. Information will be sent out by the Washingtonville Central School District, along with the Washingtonville Police Department, and of course, the Village Hall. School Board Election, Tuesday, June 9th. Phase 2 is scheduled in June 8th. To my knowledge, Barbershop Hair Salon will be opening. Phase 3 is scheduled for June 22nd. Outdoor Dining at Local Restaurants. And Phase 4, Recreation, is scheduled to open up June 6th. With that in mind, John Terry and Susan Salo, our Building Department Representatives, our Building Department Code Enforcers, will be sending out the surveys to the local businesses that's required by New York State, so we can have all of their safety plans on record. I received a number of phone calls regarding overgrown grass. Our code enforcers will be riding throughout the village. The village codes will be addressed. Okay, the village is committed to working with the residents on this issue. Our water report for 2019 has been on the village website, according to Orange County Health Department. Phone calls, Facebook postings, want to know why people are opening up the manholes. The village has contracted Delaware Engineering to survey the manholes throughout the village for making sure the manholes are safe and structurally sound, checking for any blockages, and observing any infiltration or inflow, also known as INI. As per the DEC, this inspection needs to be done every 10 years. We have no records as to the last time this was actually completed. A DPW has been working on our signs into the village. They've completed two or three signs. One sign has actually been put in place by tomorrow this time. The other two should be completed. The fourth sign, Ahearn and 94, is going to be put on hold until I hear back from New York Rising to see how much area they need to stage for their summer project, replacing the covert underneath Route 94. Planting at McLaughlin Square will begin in a few weeks. Valerie Ladato has taken, Trustee Ladato, has taken lead on that. Our Historic Police Booth will return to its home once the planting has been completed. Washingtonville is celebrating its 125th year anniversary. Thank you, Trustee Kolor, for bringing that to our attention. I've received several phone calls regarding garage sales. I've addressed this question with county officials. Please do not plan on holding any sales until it is posted as to when it will be okay to hold them. The village is looking for volunteers for both the Village Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. Please email a letter of interest to me or any of the trustees. We are needed volunteers for these two boards. With that, any trustees have any questions? Something you want to add?
No.
No.
Just a correction. You said June 6th for Phase 4, July 6th.
July 6th. Thank you, Paul. Okay, new business. Village Planning Board, as well as Zoning Board, interviews. I just said that. A lot of people have stepped forward to this call that we've been asking. I think we need to schedule interviews and appointments via Zoom. I know as soon as everything settles down, we do have a list, correct me if I'm wrong, about Planning Board. There's a list of applicants ready to go with that.
Oh, yeah, well, I have them. Yeah, it's over there.
Okay.
Yes.
So if we could schedule some meetings this week, are you able to set up Zoom meetings for that? And if, what's a good night for all of us to get together for these meetings? Anyone?
Any night works for me, if you're asking for.
Yep.
Not going anywhere.
Okay. Why, you're still quarantined, huh?
Following rules.
Paul, Rich?
I can't do tomorrow, but the rest of the week is good.
Okay, so Wednesday on?
Yes.
So how about we schedule for, let's say, Thursday? Paul, is Thursday good for you?
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say, if I could avoid Thursday.
All right, so let's schedule for Wednesday.
Not this Wednesday, though, because Rich can't do it.
No, he can't do tomorrow.
That's right, today is.
Today's Monday, Paul.
Yeah, I'm gonna write big on here, Monday.
Yeah, right down Monday.
Monday.
Things to remember. Today is Monday. Notes to self, Monday.
Have we established a date? Is it next Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
This one?
Yeah.
What time?
What's that?
What time?
We can start at 7 o'clock, or we could go earlier. It's really just us and the applicant.
I guess it's more or less making sure the applicants are available.
True.
Okay.
Short notice, but.
It is short notice. Are we?
I have Wednesday and another day.
I know we have two applicants online right now. With Nada, you available Wednesday at 7 o'clock? There you go. All right. So we got two.
I make calls tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll set it up.
Thank you. We need to schedule public meeting dates for the water sewer facility rates. Really comes to mind, the first time that we'll be able to use the Village Hall will be Monday, July 6th. I know it's our work session, but I think we should take some time to start addressing what needs to be done as far as the the rates for the facility fees. All right, looking at July 6th and July 21st, I don't know if anyone plans on not being around those two dates. The 21st of July is a regular meeting date.
That works.
Okay.
Both work.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, so what we'll do is be in public meetings, and then we can set up public hearings later on, but I think we need to have this all buttoned up by the end of August. Grand opening for Wolfingtonville Dog Park. I know we mentioned, we gave a a date of the 15th. Val, was that?
June 13th, a Saturday?
Saturday, June 13th. Yeah. Is everyone okay with that? I just have to check with the county because of the social distancing on that. I think we'll be fine, but I just want to, I just want to make sure, so we could tentatively schedule it for Saturday, June 13th.
Okay. 11?
11 is good.
Should we have a rain date?
What's that?
Should we have a rain date?
We could, that's Father's Day weekend, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Father's Day is the 21st. It's the following week.
Okay, so we could have it on the 14th. What do you think?
Okay.
14th, so 11 o'clock by June 13th, rain date. Still 11 o'clock on June 14th. And before I post it on our site, I'll check with the county to make sure that we're going to be compliant with the social distancing. 16 people have signed up their pets. So it should be a pretty good pretty good day.
You said 11 a.m., right?
11 a.m.
Going back to the B, the public meeting date for the water sewer facility piece?
Yes.
That could be in all of July, all of June?
No, July 6th and July 21st.
I had the wrong date.
Paul, it's Monday, remember?
In June.
One of them is anyhow.
Okay, if we could look at the Little League Woodfield Committe that was submitted May 26th by Dave Marino. I think Dave is on. Can we unmute Dave if he has any questions, or we could maybe ask him questions? There he is. Does anybody have questions for him while he is? All right, I'm looking at David. Correct me if I'm wrong, 7:06 2020?
Yep.
All the way to 10:3120. Now, you have 3 p.m. to dark, Monday through Friday. You want to hold that 3 p.m. or?
Um, well, the coaches all work, I would assume, so I don't, you know, we really don't need the fields until after the coaches can get there.
Okay. Okay, so that's good then.
This is all pending. We've got a plan with District 19 start in July, as soon as we get approval from the state. And we're trying to set up a hybrid schedule to play like it shows on there from July through the fall into October. So far, so good, but you know, there's no guarantee that they're actually gonna approve it in the end. You know, we have to get all the state approvals and county approvals, and then Little League has to approve it as well. So far, they're good to go.
Let's say that Little League doesn't approve it. What does that mean? You still?
If District 19 tells us we can't play, then we can't play.
Oh, really? Okay. All right, I would assume that 7:06 right now, it's not in concrete, because who knows what's gonna happen? It's so.
Right.
But again, I will keep checking with the county each day, and I do have your telephone number on here.
Yes.
To let you know if they made any changes prior to that date. One of the questions I think we had, actually Deputy Mayor Lang had brought it up, was the concession stand.
Concession stand will be closed.
Okay, so you, okay.
Yeah, Little League just told us we are not allowed to run concession. And from what I understand, the county health departments and the state health departments aren't giving people permits anyway. So it's a moot point.
Okay.
I answered that question.
Yep.
The other question I had was the Saturday, 8 a.m. to dark?
Yes. We play all day Saturday, for the most part. Always have. We start games, we start working on the field at 8:00, we start games at 9:00, and we play through all day.
And then Sunday if necessary.
Sunday if necessary, because of weather, rainouts, stuff like that. We haven't had to use Sunday the past couple of years, but who knows? The way it's worked, I usually, if I need to use it Sunday, I contact the mayor and let him know.
The other question I had, along with the concession, was the public toilets over there. I don't, you know, we don't know what the what the mandate's gonna be for use of public toilets, or you know, sanitizing them, or how often, or if they gotta be done 14 times a day. So that's something that we have to think about also, because we're not gonna have somebody there to what, again, we don't, we don't know what it's gonna be.
Okay, well, if we need to set it up so that when games are in session, that we have to have, we have to have somebody there anyway. If we have to have somebody to clean the bathroom a certain period of times a day, you just let us know, and we'll take care of that.
Okay. If they allow us to open them.
Correct.
Again, everything is.
This is all.
Very fluid right now. Yes. Okay. Anyone else? Rich?
No, it's good. If they're not gonna use a concession stand, then I think we're okay with the electricity.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is contact the trash company to remove the, and relocate the the dumpsters. I know, Rich, you wanted one here, so we could continue to work upstairs, and okay.
Now, what we may do, and I don't know what they're gonna say about this, we may just, again, I don't know what the health department's gonna say about it, but if it comes into July and August, we may sell water out of coolers based on whatever rules we have to follow in order to do that.
I was just gonna ask you that. If you have any plans on inviting vendors? Like a?
No.
No?
No, it would just be, you know, not.
You sure? You answered that too fast. Are you sure?
Yeah, no vendors, no.
Okay.
We're planning on just, we're trying to figure it out. It's not to make money off it, but it's to, you know, to take care of the kids who are gonna be thirsty. We're probably gonna have something, again, if the health department allows it, where we'll have water in the refrigerators, and we'll put it in coolers and bring it out, and whatever the rules are, we'll, you know, we'll take care of that, if they allow it.
Okay, I could ask that question for you too.
Okay.
You too. Now, there's no water fountain up there?
No.
No? Okay. And you know, if I ask this question tomorrow, they're not gonna give me an answer.
Correct. I know.
But they are very good at getting back to to everyone. Okay. Now, the insurance, we're just gonna carry over the same one, or do we?
Yeah. It's the same one. It's for a year.
Okay, so Val, you got that. Okay. Insurance is good. The field would be ready as far as the village is concerned.
Okay.
We're working on the infield by bringing new clay. Any painting if needs to be done. Okay, so the village will be ready for July 6th. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do, but I guess it's a state question. Are the bleachers gonna be open?
Well, as of right now, the plan that we have is there has to be social distancing. We haven't set anything out. Like you said, it's a state thing. We don't know how many people they're going to allow with each kid, but we would pretty much be responsible to keep the people as socially distanced as possible. We don't know yet what the rules are gonna be with masks come July and August. We're waiting that one out as well. But our plan is we're gonna, whatever the guidelines are, and if we are approved to play, we will follow whatever the guidelines are.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good, good question. Okay, anyone else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to.
Yep.
I'm seconding it.
Okay, motion by Trustee Kolor, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lang. Roll call, Trustee Kolor?
Yes.
Trustee Ladato?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Bucko, yes. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's not on the agenda, but John? It's our work session, so it's good.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay. All right.
I'm just gonna slide this over.
Okay, I know we have a law that says you cannot have interior, internal lighting for signs, because they're basically, I think the law was established because they were distracting cars, look at them, they can have accidents, and they also don't look good. One of the things that, one of the towns that I used to work for had a law that was very specific that lights, lighting for signs cannot be scrolling, flashing, be distracting in that way, as a lot of these signs are coming out now that can actually move and rotate and make flashing signs and so forth, very distracting. It doesn't look good for the village. I think we should amend our sign instead of not just saying illuminated from the outside, but to include also that they shouldn't be scrolling, flashing, and distracting in such a manner. That'll get rid of the LED signs and keep the village looking nice. They cheapen. They tend to cheapen the village or a town when you have them. The other thing I noticed is that, and Paul, Paul Lang also noticed, is that we don't have anything that states specifically we should not be having fowl. Fowl covers a lot of different things, like pigeon coops, ducks, or a manner of birds. Right now, we only have something that states chickens. But if we don't have a law that's gonna be actually on hand, some people may get the idea of start establishing chicken coops, and then later on, chicken coops, pigeon coops and things, later on, they're gonna start saying, oh, this is grandfathered. I'm allowed to have it because it was never mentioned before. So it might be a good idea to have something specifically saying foul, and also maybe a law, a local law that says if it doesn't state you can do something, it can't be done. That could probably also save a lot of problems and headaches. And that's pretty much it.
John, I think that it doesn't say specifically chickens right now. I think it said, didn't we say, when we looked, it said farm animals?
Could be. I don't remember right now.
I don't remember, I don't remember seeing chickens specifically. I think it said farm animals, and that's when we looked up.
I could be mistaken. Yeah, it could be.
I agree with you. You're right. It needs to be, and I think that's why at our zoning meetings, before the regular meetings in the normal circumstances, that, you know, we need to work on the language that's in the current zoning code.
Yes.
The other thing you mentioned, the flashing lights, you know, and again, that's something we have, we have to look at, because I remember, I don't know, and I think they're closed now. On Route 17 in Tuxedo, there was an ice cream stand, and they had a sign there that said, "Open," and it flashed, "Open." And that guy got in, I remember, this is about going back, probably about four or five, six years now. I remember the guy telling me he got into a lot of trouble because of that sign that was flashing open. So I think we have to, you know, be.
And amendments.
A little careful in our wording, you know, yeah, I agree with you, the scrolling signs and the flashing signs, the gaudy signs, but this poor guy just, you know, trying to sell ice cream in that, it was a famous place, and I think he closed a few years ago. But the town was giving him a hard way to go on that.
It just doesn't look good. They're cheap.
Well, I don't know, but I'm saying, you know, when we, when we, when we consider it, and for the rest of the board too, when we consider it, somebody has a sign in their store that says, "Open." Now, I don't know that that's, that's something we want to you know, we want.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah.
We just need to be careful with the wording.
Okay. Oh, yeah, there is something the mayor reminded me. I have seven pages of an email, as well as conversations which we've documented in regard to the Little League banners. I have not seen anything going forward with that. I wrote Scott tonight, asking him to, you know, let me know if he's done everything that Orange and Rockland needs to address and ask for the banners to be legally placed on the polls. I haven't heard anything. I have talked to him on several occasions, and we've said we've had five, seven pages of five, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 emails, I believe. And he hasn't gone forward with anything, and it looks like we're probably just gonna have to have this withdrawn, because he hasn't stepped forward and done what's required. Did I mention Scott? Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not, not for lack of trying, there's just been absolutely no follow-up on it.
Thank you, John.
Okay. I'm just gonna turn the camera off.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry to hear that an ice cream place went out of business.
Yeah. Everybody's probably all passed it on Route 17 in Tuxedo there.
No, they're like magnets with me, so I would have went in and that's something to go. That being said, with what John just mentioned, I know we had some conversation on the ambulance banner on a pole that's out there. So that would fall under the same thing as Orange and Rockland, unless they wanted to put the banner itself on the building, which they can do. I don't think anyone here would have a hard time with that, or, and that was for Sal Macuso, who passed away. Was a very instrumental person at the ambulance corps.
I would have no objection. That sounds fine.
To put it on the building?
Sure, of course. You're not dealing with electric or any other carriers, or, you know, anything hanging or anything, that's, that's that would be fine, and it's honoring somebody. It's not advertising.
Okay, so I will contact, I got a phone call from Mr. Radek, Kevin Radek, asking me to talk about it in tonight's meeting. Okay, so I will let him know. I believe he has a Board of Ed meeting tonight, so he's not on, on the at this meeting right now. Okay, anybody have anything else you want to discuss, you want to see happening? Want to see us move forward with something within the village?
Are we gonna have Delaware Engineering with the, for those public hearings with water sewer facility piece?
Absolutely, yes. One of the, and I'm just looking at my phone for the date, so we're looking at June 6th. Right, did I say, I'm sorry, July 6th.
July 6th.
July 6th, July 21st. I will have them at, at both of those meetings, as well as the public hearings, unless we don't need them at the meetings, we just need them at the hearings, but it's something that, you know, that we could discuss. Looking forward, I know first Monday of every month is the work session. Well, it's Labor Day again, September 7th, so we need to come up with the date to have that meeting. And the election is the 15th of
September?
September.
Okay. Wow, so everything changes in September, as far as the meeting dates. Okay.
No. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, September 15th.
The second quarter sales tax check should be coming within the next week or two. Last year, if I remember correctly, we received approximately $250,000. This year, it's going to be significantly less, because now we, this whole second quarter is pretty much the whole COVID. So we just hope that everything gets settled, open for business, and we could move on. I do have copies of Um, I do have copies of the, um, well, I, I think what we could do is talk about that in executive session. Somebody want to make a motion? No?
You know, I want to just say one thing about the, uh, going back to the, people calling up why the people, they were opening up manhole. I mean, people are using more and more Lysol wipes for their cleaning and sanitizing. They can't go in the toilet, they can't go into the wastewater system, uh, and people have to understand that. I mean, that, that one photo you sent me of that, it was pretty much like a four-foot log of baby wipes, hand wipe, or Lysol wipe, they don't break down. Boiler, boiler paper breaks down in the, in the sewer system. Uh, those wipes, even if they say they, they, that's, that's approved, they do not break down. You can go down to the wastewater treatment plant and, and you see they pull them off that screen every day, they're, uh, they just foul up the whole plant. So please don't throw them, wipe, wipe down your counter and throw it in the garbage. That is all.
Yeah, they do cause problems for us. Talking with, with Delaware and JCO, they really believe that there's a lot of illegal hookups from sump pumps and roof drains going into the, the storm system. Uh, it's very stormy. What's that, yeah. So, uh, we do have to, um, keep an eye on that. Uh, hopefully it's not continuing, but it, I'm sure it just happened when they were building homes.
Do they have any, any, anything specific that they can show us or give us an, an idea, you know?
No. They don't have exact addresses, but that's where they believe a lot of the I N I is coming from. Okay, the manholes right now, except for that one that I showed you, um, are pretty clean, okay? They should have gone decker today, but they didn't find anything, to my knowledge, uh, about a block. So it was from the house itself out to the, the street that was, uh, clogged.
But if they're hooking up their, their gutters or whatever else to the storm drain, how is that? That doesn't have anything to do with the wastewater.
It's going into the manholes.
It's going into the, it's going into the manhole itself, not the storm, not the storm drain.
Not the storm drain, no, I'm sorry, I said that, so I stand corrected.
All right. Yeah, that's not good.
All right, we could, um, anyone, any other questions? We can make a motion to adjourn and go into executive session, in which we will be talking about personnel. Uh, we're going to log off this Zoom and enter into a new Zoom meeting that's, uh, for the village board.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
So Deputy Mayor Lang made the motion. Trustee Kolor seconded, roll call trustee Kolor.
Yes.
Trustee Ladato.
Yes.
Trustee Sampson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lang.
Yeah.
And Mayor Bucko. Okay, thank you, everyone. Please stay safe, be well, thank you.